Evening, everyone. Call us to order, and we can start with roll call.
Alderman Parker, absent. Alderman Ship.
Here.
Alderman Geenan.
Present.
Alderman Clark.
Here.
Alderman Mayberry.
Here.
Alderman Spaghetti's.
Present.
Alderman Talonair.
Here.
Mayor Tomes.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you.
Alder-
Go ahead.
Alderman Parker notified the city through city clerk Judith Gilbert that he would not be physically present for the meeting tonight due to illness and made a request to participate remotely per city ordinance.
Do I have a motion to allow Alderman Parker to participate in the council meeting remotely? So move.
Second.
Move to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Dylan, are you there?
I'm here, can you hear me?
I can hear you now. Speak up if we forget about you, speak up. Alright, and we need to do the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Alright, item number five.
Minutes of the December tenth, two thousand eighteen meeting.
Move to approve the minutes as printed.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, update. Couple items. Holiday observance schedule. In observance of the two thousand eighteen holidays, City Hall will be closed Monday, December twenty-fourth, Tuesday, December twenty-fifth, and then, of course, Tuesday, January first. The Refuge Collection will be on schedule Monday, the twenty-fourth, and the thirty-first. After that, the rest will be late one day, the rest of both those weeks. I can only read. Recycling will be one day late both weeks. The city's libraries will be closed Monday, December twenty-fourth, Tuesday, December twenty-fifth, and Monday, the thirty-first, and Tuesday, the first. For more information, please visit www.rigov.org. The city of Rock Island wishes everyone a very happy and safe holiday season. Friends of Douglas Park Night. Quad City Storm Hockey in the Tax Slayer Center will host the Friends of Hallberg Night on Friday, Douglas Park Night, but Hallberg Night, on Friday, December twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, starting at seven PM. Gather friends and family for a night of hockey and raffle contest. Portions of the tickets sold through the following link will go directly back to the Friends of Hallberg in restoration efforts of Douglas Park in Rock Island. The link to donate to purchase tickets is www.fevo.me/rifac. Citizen Survey. The city of Rock Island has launched its initiative, innovative survey platform for residents to directly provide input into local government. Polco is a tool for the public to have their voice heard and where residents can answer questions and make comments in regards to city matters. Residents need to register by visiting the city's website, www.rigov.org, under popular links. Citizen, click, click on the citizen survey platform. Answer the comments or remain anonymous. The service is free to all residents. So, thank you. Alright, item number seven.
An ordinance for the levy, assessment, and collection of property taxes for the city of Rock Island for the fiscal year beginning January first, two thousand nineteen, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. Second reading.
Move to pass the ordinance.
Second.
Move to second, is there any discussion?
I'll just make a comment or two, very briefly. There's a lot of people here, and I don't know if they're all here for this, or if they have other issues, but just regarding increasing the city tax, the property tax that we're proposing. As much as I dislike the idea of having to do that, and after analyzing it and going back and forth in my mind, my final analysis is that this is not a time to shrink from a reasonable, small property tax increase in order to help propel our city forward. We've made substantial progress. Sometimes it feels like we're taking two steps forward and one back, but nevertheless, we're taking progress. And I think if you stay till the end of the meeting, you're gonna see some issues that were voting on that are very progressive as far as new businesses in Rock Island. And I hope people will support us and invest in our city and help us move forward. Thanks.
Anything else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I could. Representing the second ward, I agree with a lot what Jane said, but I have not talked to one person in the second ward that is in agreeance with this, so I will be voting against it.
If you could have roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Nay.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talonair.
No.
Five ayes, two nays, motion carried.
Item eight.
An ordinance adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning January first, two thousand nineteen, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. Second reading.
Move to pass the ordinance.
Second.
Move to second, is there any discussion? You know, I guess I'm gonna take a quick one, like I did last week, a little bit on this, and try not to belabor it. But I guess I do wanna bring forth the several things here that the city staff, like I talked about last week, the city staff, the department heads, along with their workers, have worked very, very hard at trying to be very conservative with the taxpayers' dollars. They've turned a lot of stones over, made a lot of adjustments, and continue to try to save where they can. You know, I don't wanna get into the details of how all that's happened, we've talked about that, whether it's delaying employment of some, whether it's cutting and pushing back the purchase of vehicles, or a different array of things. But they have worked very, very hard at it to try to keep from having to increase property taxes, and I wanna commend them for that. I am also opposed and don't like the idea of raising property taxes, but sometimes it's a necessary one, and I'm finding unfortunately even this one is a necessary one, to balance a budget. I do believe in a balanced budget, we should not run in a deficit. We do have some reserves out there, but we need to preserve those the best we can for, once again, not getting, trying to get into a lot of details, but with the Moody's ratings, etc., to have strong financials, as a lot of people know, is very important, and we need to make sure that we stay very solid financially. And the city is very solid financially, and we're very fortunate to have that. Over the years, the city councils and the employees of the city have made sure that we've made those right decisions and we're financially solid. But it is getting tougher and tougher. Our revenue coming into the city has stayed flat at best, and we are gonna be talking about some positive things to that toward the end of this meeting, which are very exciting. But I must mention that those type of things we're gonna be voting on get delayed, that the revenues we see from those are delayed by several years because we do have to offer at time to time incentives. And people get frustrated with offering different people incentives to come and locate or to grow. But it's a reality. A lot of other cities are doing it, and I'm not talking just here in the quad cities, but across the United States, a lot of cities offer different incentives to attract businesses. And so to do that, we need to do it wisely, and we feel at this point, the ones we're doing to talk about today are done wisely, but you're, so you really aren't gonna reap the benefit. The city's not gonna reap the benefit of those increased property taxes or sales that they may have, or whatever, for three, four, ten years, in some cases. And, but that puts light at the end of that tunnel. It's a positive move toward the city. So, even though we see these, talk about new businesses coming town, we've had some great successes over, in two thousand nineteen, once again with McLaughlin Body and Dunkin' Donuts, Crawford and Company, and a number of others, we've had some great successes, but you don't see those benefits unfortunately for several years to come. And I guess I bring that all up is that we do have to take a look in the near future of continuing to make cuts in our budgets, because the revenue is not gonna grow quick. It's small steps as far as a lot of the revenue. We don't have a big, large box retail coming in here, and even with that, it would take some time to recuperate and have a substantial amount of revenue growth. And the city does have a number of expenses that we can't avoid. We have some bonds, we have more debt today than we had five years ago, six years ago, a fair amount, and those bonds have to be paid back. And so it's taken a lot of revenue away. We have a number of negotiated labor contracts that go out multiple years, and we have to live with those commitments. A promise made should be a promise kept, and we've gotta live with those. So unfortunately, some of those don't match the financial situation the city is in. There's pay raises and increases in different areas that are maybe a little richer than we would like to see in today's world, but didn't know that when they were negotiated several years ago, and didn't anticipate and hoped for things to happen, and they have it at this point. So we do need to get wise on those things and work with those in the near future, as they're negotiated new ones with the different labor unions. Because remember, I guess I would remind you that of our general fund that we have to work with, the thirty-six, basically thirty-six million dollars, seventy-seven percent of that is wages and benefits. So quite a bit of it is involved with people. And the only way you control that is either eliminate people, watch what the increases are, is the only way to control that part of it. And lately, we've been making a lot of adjustments with other parts of the budget, and those have, can't be, can't kick that can down the road year after year after year. The city has eliminated a number of positions over the years. There used to be far more employees in the city of Rock Island than there are today. We're just working smarter and harder, and I say "we" being the staff to accomplish that. So I guess I even say that in kind of a precursor to two thousand, the next budget, a year from now when we're talking about it, there may have to be some more cuts, and sometimes even maybe more drastic. Don't know what's to come. But I guess I'm just, if you wanna call it planting the seed and letting people know that for us to stay financially solid, there's times that we may, you have to buckle down. And we've been doing that for several years, and we may, sometimes you have to make those tough decisions and take a big bite and buckle down to make cuts. And that's what it may take in the next fiscal year when we're working on budgets, to make some bigger cuts, to make this thing, to work out and balance. But we do it for then the long run, for the citizens to have a solid city, whether it be four or five years down the road, when we continue to attract new businesses and those incentives are completed, or the bonds are paid down, that we can then reap the benefit and continue to offer quality services. Our goal has been to make sure that we stay with quality services. If we make many more cuts in personnel, it will dig into services the city offers. And so that's where we've got, we'll have to make those tough decisions in the future year here or so, in this coming year. So I guess, I don't wanna be bleak, but I guess I just wanna make sure that we set the stage right, that we got some exciting times, and we got some tough times ahead of us. And we look for the citizens of Rock Island, the business owners of Rock Island, to help us. If we stay positive, talk positive, positive things will happen, and so please work with us. And like I say, at the end of this council meeting, toward the end of it, we have some great, wonderful things that are happening, that everybody's worked hard at trying to put together. So with that, I apologize for taking too long, but I just felt it was worth saying.
I just wanted to make some comments as well. I know we've got some media attention here, and with this being the last budget I'm gonna be voting on as sixth ward alderman, as filing was today for the races, and it's very clear, it wasn't a ruse, I'm not running. Despite what Alderman Mayberry may have said, no. No, but I've learned a lot over this four budget cycles, and I've seen the process improve tremendously. And I, last council meeting last week, I used the phrase that the process now bleeds transparency, and I mean that literally. It's, it is a very transparent process, and with Stephanie, our finance director, leading the way, it really has improved a hundredfold in the council understanding all the different funds and all the different, all the different parts of the budget and how it all fits together. It really is a year-long process. And so I just wanted to say that, you know, you know, if the, and I noticed this last year, and I don't remember which specific TV stations it was, but I felt like there was a good job of educating the public on what portion of the tax bill the city of Rock Island occupies. Because, you know, people can look at that tax bill and see it as just one thing, or understanding that there's several different taxing bodies that are part of that. And looking at the past seven years, for example, of the past seven years, there's only been two years where there's been a property tax increase for the city of Rock Island, and that was last year and this year, of the past seven years. And that's an increase of the rate in which the property is taxed. That's not an increase of the entire property bill. And so I think sometimes the semantics and the language that we use to describe this is very, very important. And I think we did a very good job explaining last year the extra dollars per month, and the additional handful of dollars per month this year that this tax rate increase is gonna bring on homeowners, so, and property owners throughout the city. But, you know, the challenge of the global financial crisis, the impetus for fully funding pensions, police and fire that the city's responsible for, the ambitious economic growth plan that the city took on to bring about some change to Eleventh Street that didn't fully form out the way we wanted to, but, you know, with Hill and Valley's relocation and the Blackhawk College Education Center that's there now, and, you know, the new police station, and now we've got a new water filtration plant, and just a whole lot of things coming online all at the same time. And so, you know, there is this outlook of an increased burden on the city, but the city doesn't get to think, with the advantage of just a one- or two-year picture, you know, the state of Illinois is two-hundred years old now, the city of Rock Island was one-hundred and seventy, seventy-five, was that, last year? Seventy-six now. You know, and so we're looking at a couple of years here where the ratio's a little bit skewed, but there's also another picture on the other side of that, what the 2030s look like, and what kind of city we wanna be in the future, once we are able to fully catch up with the pensions and pay off a whole series of these general obligation bonds. But, you know, I guess the point I wanna make here is that I do have a lot of faith in that the residents in this community understand that what we're doing up here is serious work, and it's not this ideological thing about do taxes, or what's taxes and what's not, and Democrat or Republican, or this or that. It's, you know, what does the city have to levy to run this operation? We were given this authority by the state of Illinois through the Constitution, and as such, as a home rule community, we have the power to have a tax levy, to run this city effectively. And, you know, you go around and you talk to the staff who are working here, and as the mayor said, they know that there used to be more people who worked here, there's a lot less now. And everyone's kinda stretched thin, each department, they would all tell you, if we had more people, we could do more things. And so I just, I wanna push back a little bit on this idea that, you know, austerity is gonna be the solution. I've yet to see an example where that's really worked for the benefit of growth or for the people of any community or country. And that I maintain that the portion that someone would pay, that I pay, my wife and I pay on our property tax bill, the portion that we pay for the city is a high-value premium, that for a lot of people, you're actually gonna be paying more, or just about the same for your cellphone bill on an annual basis, is what you're paying to live in the city of Rock Island. So, you know, I just, I just wanna commend the news media, I thought they did a really fair job portraying what we had to do last year, which was a higher increase, this year substantially less. And that's really a testament to this, what the staff have done, and the mayor and the council being involved to really push for as balanced of an approach as possible, out of respect for the taxpayers. So, I do think this is a sound budget, a very responsible budget, and proud to have been part of it.
Thank you. Alright, I think we're ready for roll call.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Nay.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talonair.
No.
Five ayes, two nays, motion carried.
Item number nine.
A special ordinance amending Chapter fifteen, Article five, Section fifteen dash sixty-one, Subparagraph A of the Code of Ordinances, changing the fuel tax rate from three cents per gallon to five cents per gallon effective February one, two thousand nineteen.
Motion to consider suspend the rules, pass ordinance.
Second.
Move to second, is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item ten.
A special ordinance establishing a four-way stop intersection at Sixteenth Street with its intersection with Twentieth Avenue.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance. Move to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item eleven.
Claims, A, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number ten in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars to Green Space Associates of Davenport, Iowa, for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen sod replacement program for services provided from October twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, through November thirteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Move to accept the reports and authorize payment as recommended.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twelve.
Claims for the week of December seventh through December thirteenth in the amount of three million, two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Move to allow the claims.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item thirteen.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding bid proposals for a three-year lease maintenance agreement for employee uniforms, recommending the contract be awarded to Phelps Uniform Service Company of Muscatine, Iowa.
Move to award the contract as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
I have a few questions, please.
Sure.
I'm not sure, maybe Mike might be able to answer these. There seemed to be an issue with the Davenport company not being able to provide everything that you needed. There was different categories, there was executive wear, there's work uniforms, there's miscellaneous rental. Most of the things that were asterisked, which indicated that did not meet city specifications, were in the executive wear classification, and there were six items, clothing items of different, of varying colors. Was it the color that was the issue?
It was color, it was quality of the fabric, not meeting the specification. The biggest, the biggest reason for not going with the other company was for the jean cuts. They didn't offer jeans, and pretty much a hundred percent of our employees wear jeans every day, and that was the reason for not going with the other company.
The other question I had was with regard to it being a three-year contract and not really knowing exactly what the total expense is gonna be, because we don't know who's gonna, who's gonna order what, or who's gonna need what, is that it?
We've looked at previous, the previous budgeted contract, and it's fairly close to about the same amount from previous years. So we have budgeted close to that amount.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item fourteen.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding bids for the Ridgewood Water Tower Rehabilitation Project, recommending the bid be awarded to Putnam County Painting Incorporated of Mark, Illinois, in the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand dollars.
That's a sense. Their motion?
Move to award the bid as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Move to second, is there any discussion?
I have a question. There was an engineering consultant that was used to generate this recommendation. I was wondering what that consultant cost was for us.
I think it's, let me find that one, I'm not sure if that was included in the packet or not.
I didn't see it in my report.
I do not have that in front of me, I could give you that, find out that information for you, though.
Would you please? I appreciate it, just to get an idea of what it costs us total when we have to hire a consultant, and then after that, do what they advise us to do. Thanks.
Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item fifteen.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a request for qualifications for an analysis of the city-owned parking garage, recommending the project be awarded to Desmond Design Management of Chicago, Illinois, in the amount of eighteen thousand, three-hundred dollars. Note, this item was postponed from the December tenth, two thousand eighteen meeting.
Motion to approve the agreement as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement, subject to minor modifications by the city attorney.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
I just wanna thank the city staff for providing the additional information, that was, that was helpful.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a company in Rock Island, I-Meg, that does the same type work. There's a representative here tonight that would like to discuss this, if this is possible.
I suppose, if we can, it's not an open meeting, I mean, but we can allow, I guess, you know, the other, the other, the precious, the other bidder, or so to speak, a qualification deal, isn't here to have a chance to talk, either, talk.
Yeah, but we can table it again, and...
But, you know...
He can talk at the end of the meeting.
But he has, he can talk at the end of the meeting like everyone else has.
Sure.
Correct, correct.
We should postpone the vote until the next meeting, because the, I mean, there's no sense on...
But we did ask staff for information, and they provided that information, so...
Yeah, and Virgil has someone he wants to listen to.
And I wanna hear what they have to say also.
Well, alright, there you go.
Alright.
I make a motion to table the, table the motion.
Hang on, just a second here.
It's a non-debatable motion.
I'm not going to get a sec.
If we were to continue again to another date certain, sir.
Because if we, if you just table it in general, then we don't have a specific time to bring it back. I was just wondering if you wanted to modify that motion to a date certain.
I just, well, the only thing is, is it, hang on just a second, Steve. I know you made it into...
I, no, I, okay.
No, I'm, I'm saying is that, and maybe to try to put this to bed, because we've delayed it a couple times, we'll let him speak and see if that makes a difference here.
Perfect.
Do you wish to come up and speak? There you go.
Just proceed.
And you don't have to, if you don't want.
Well...
It's just, you know, Mr. Mayberry, you know...
We were requested to show up tonight and, and answer any questions that I think may come up. We understand it was qualifications-based, and the selection of the firm, I'm assuming, is well-qualified, and we do similar work as well.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we understand that decisions can go either way, so, but I just wanted to be, we were requested to come, so we decided to come.
Okay.
Could you give your name and...
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh...
Is there a place to sign there, real quick? I hate to, you know, do it real quick, put your name.
Okay.
Thank you. And your name again is?
John Felman with I-Meg, and here in Rock Island.
Okay. All right. Appreciate you, you know, at least, you know...
Yes, sir. So, yeah, so I guess I was, I was assuming there might be some questions or whatnot, but...
I'm not sure.
We, we had questions earlier, but staff gave us the answers to those questions.
Okay.
But we thank you, and for all what you do for the city of Rock Island.
Yes, absolutely.
We truly appreciate you.
Thank you.
Could you tell us what you've done, and I-Meg has done in the past on this garage right across the street? Could you tell us?
Done work in the past there, yes, sir. Some repairs, emergency repairs usually, because there's a hole in the deck or something, we quickly get out there and try to, and, and, you know, get that going. We've done different plan sets over the years, I'd say from 2000 to 2012. I don't know how much work's been done since then. So, we're familiar with the garage, we've done some work. And again, I'm not here to bash the other company. I don't, I'm not familiar with them per se, but I know that it was selection-based, which we do like as consultants versus price-based. So, we're very in favor of that. Like I said, I'm assuming this other company is very capable. I can't speak for them personally. I've never worked with them or seen their work, though, so...
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
All right, can we have a roll call?
Can we just have one, one more comment?
Sure.
Just reading through the, the documentation that was presented to us, this is, as the council knows, just a advisory consultant. We still, if, if they have, go ahead and give us their analysis, there's a lot more that's involved after that, in terms of either repair or replacement of the parking garage. So, there's, this is just the beginning. It's just scratching the surface.
Correct. There's no doubt that, what if their findings we have, whatever, if there's action required, then we'll, you'll go out for the request for proposal, and we may use I-Meg or whatever it is for those standards, or that, you know, the work that needs to be done.
But is that, it's a question, because I don't remember it being that way, but I think once you jump in bed with the Chicago-based firm, typically, isn't it true that we just hang right with the firm that, that does the original plans? I guess that should come from either Randy or, but isn't that how it works?
Well, it kind of depends what the recommendation is. Certainly, any actual physical work would all be bid out and be voted upon. Whether there was any engineering work and what that was, I guess we'd have to look at at the time. Typically, for the large projects like the police station and the water treatment plant and our whole long-term control program, that's true.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Still, we're giving $18,300 of Rock Island taxpayers' money to someone out of Chicago, and we've been doing this for years. We have got people qualified here to do this work. I-Meg, I believe, is the second-largest engineering and consulting company in the world. They're located right here in Rock Island. We got to take care of home first.
They're a quality company, there's no doubt about it, and have a lot of qualifications, a lot of different areas, including, I'm not saying they, they do in this one also. And, and so, at this point, but staff felt, and they sent the, the, you know, information why they felt it was, you know, at this point, the other one they favored, a little more qualified, but not saying that both can't do a good job. They just, this one was a little, they felt a little higher than the other. All right, so roll call.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
No.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talonair.
No.
Five ayes, two nays, motion carried.
Item 16.
Report from the city clerk regarding a resolution approving the partial release of executive session minutes and destruction of audio recordings for the same executive session meetings.
To approve the partial release of executive session minutes as recommended and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 17.
Report from the Finance Department regarding an adjustment to the calendar year 2018 budget, recommending an increase in the Community Development Block Grant Fund 242 in the amount of $738,170.79.
Move to approve that budget adjustment as recommended.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
Mayor, I just want to read for the folks at home that this $738,000 additional dollars here for the calendar year 2018 budget from the HUD CDBG money is going to go for a variety of purposes. General administration, so this helps supporting our, our, our staff, demolition for blighted properties, Rock Island County School Health Link, Douglas Park Improvements, Douglas Park Fiber Optic, Longfellow School sidewalks, Quad City Botanical Center, and the safety camera project. So, a variety of resources and amenities and, and infrastructure here around the city. So, going to get, put all to use here in Rock Island.
Good, thank you. Roll call.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 18.
Report from the Finance Department regarding an adjustment to the calendar year 2018 budget, recommending an increase in the Motor Fuel Tax Fund 221 in the amount of $395,250.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve the budget adjustment as recommended.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Can I, can I make a comment, even though we've already voted, I mean, it's not going to change anything?
Absolutely, yeah.
Just so that the public understands the purpose of this adjustment, if either Stephanie or, since Larry's not here with us, Mike could explain the Parkway Repair Project Number 2806.
Is it reconstruction? Or the budget adjustment?
Well, just to explain what the money's for, the, the project itself. Doesn't have to be in great detail. I just, I read it, I saw the pictures, I, but I want the public to understand why we're making this adjustment.
Yeah, so we get about a million, close, a little under a million dollars a year in motor fuel tax funds, and we've been trying to do concrete patching and rehabilitation of the expressway out in Southwest, and so we applied that $395,000 to concrete patching this year, and hope to do approximate amount next year if we have motor fuel tax funds available, which it's looking like we will have.
So, that'll be a significant improvement to that road surface, then?
It is. It's not a, you know, we're not doing entire length, it's more patching, so it's random locations. We're picking out the worst locations, getting those completed first, but it makes a big improvement.
And some people call that the Beltway, is that correct?
Yes.
So, people understand what we're talking about in southwest Rock Island. Thank you.
Item 19.
Report by the Finance Department regarding an adjustment to the calendar year 2018 budget, recommending an increase in the General Fund by $73,676.45, an increase in the Park and Recreation Fund by $332,105.96, an increase in the Stormwater Fund by $7,747.81, an increase in the Fleet Services Fund by $33,899.43, an increase in the Employee Health Fund by $3,530.43, an increase in the MLK Building Fund by $8,835.90, and an increase in the MLK Activity Fund by $3,104.52.
Motion to approve the budget adjustment as recommended.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 20.
Report from the Human Resources Department regarding a general wage increase for non-affiliated employees, recommending a 1.66% increase effective December 31, 2018.
Move to approve the general wage increase as, as recommended.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
Maybe just an explanation from John for the general public, how we arrived at this figure. It's a relatively low increase, lower than the last two years, but maybe you can tell them how we arrived at that number.
Okay, well, typically, we arrive at the number just by using the CPIU. I mean, we take a, the December number from each year, and usually that number is reported in February of 2019 for the 2018 year. So, the last two years for the non-affiliated groups, we've used actual inflation here in the state of Illinois. So, that's where we arrived at the number.
And that, that comes from a state report?
It comes from the Bureau of Labor Statistics information.
Bureau of Labor Statistics?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Need a roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 21.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding a Sunset Marina Rate Proposal for Non-Powered Slips with Water Only.
Move to approve the Sunset Marina Rate Proposal as presented and recommended.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
Sounds like a good plan to increase the usership of the smaller slips without electricity.
Yep. Every year, they're, we're looking for ways to promote it and find some incentives, so this is another one, and it's definitely worth a try. Get some more volume down there. Roll call.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 22.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding an increase in wastewater rates, recommending a 3% increase for 2019, effective February 1, 2019.
Is there a motion out there?
Motion to approve the storm water rate increase as recommended, oh, wait, wastewater, wastewater rate increase, excuse me, as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 23.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding an increase in stormwater rates, recommending a 2% increase for 2019, effective February 1, 2019.
Motion to approve the stormwater rate increase as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
Mayor, I just wanted to comment for anyone here, the audience who are watching at home, there are detailed memos attached to both of these items explaining the increase in cost for operation for both the wastewater and stormwater infrastructure. It's going to be a challenge that the city's always going to have to deal with, with federal and state regulations, the proximity to the river, the permit costs, the testing, the pipes themselves. The operation is very expensive, and as, being an enterprise fund, we have to have it so it can run itself, and, and, and so the users pay for it, and occasionally there are increases in the infrastructure work that we have to do, and the operation work that we have to do. So, anyone with questions can reach out to Public Works or click on these links for more information as well.
And I guess we'll give a plug for the rain gardens and everything else. If there's anything out, anybody can do out there to help keep the water from running down the storm drains in the streets, so, and/or in the sewers and sort of thing, is helpful storm drains in the streets and/or in the sewers and that sort of thing, is helpful for these costs, less volume, less cost.
And this is, we haven't raised these since two thousand and eleven, correct?
That's correct.
So, one more important point besides the plumbing is the fact that this also helps pay for the Mississippi levee system, which protects our downtown especially and a lot of residential area, in the, below the hill area.
Very good, all right, rule call.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Seven eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-four.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding consideration of a two-lot final subdivision plant of Leonardo's First Edition, located at thirty-nine-twenty-two Fourteenth Avenue and fourteen-hundred-fourtieth Street.
Motion to approve the final plot with the requested variances as recommended, subject to obtaining all the required signatures on subdivision, the certificate, and subject to conforming to all the requirements in the zoning and subdivision ordinance.
Second. Move to second, I'm sorry, fell asleep, is there any discussion? No. Rule call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Seven eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-five.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a request from Deborah Freiberg to apply for a special use permit to operate as an Airbnb property at her residence at twenty-seven-oh-two-thirtieth Avenue.
Motion to allow the application of the special use permit as recommended.
Second.
Move to second, is there any discussion?
I've gotten, I'm sure all of us have gotten a call on this one, this is, just to be clear, this is to allow the applicant to apply, we're not making a decision tonight, correct?
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you for explaining that, Alderman Geenan.
Now, I gotta say that, and I think it's a great application, and I, you know, I wish her that, you know, that hopefully they can get this through, and I know that, you know, the type of operations she's running for this is just very sporadic in her case, and she's home, and when they have, you know, when she does use this, but, so I hope that she has success with this going through.
So, the special use process, just for people's information, will allow people who are in favor or against to come, or to send letters, or file petitions, or whatever they want to do, in order to express their views about whether they should be approved or denied?
Yeah, and there'll be a public hearing, yes. All right, rule call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Nay.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talon Air.
No.
Five eyes, two nays, motion carried.
Okay, twenty-six.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding proposed draft changes to the CDBG Policies and Procedures Manual.
Motion to approve the draft Policies and Procedures Manual as recommended, subject to minor modifications by the city attorney and the Chicago HUD office.
Second. Move to second, any discussion? Rule call.
Alderman Parker.
Hold on, I do have a request of staff, so, we are changing the policies, and a lot of this is for helping out our moderate to lower income residents, fix a leaking roof or replace a water heater, et cetera, not exactly related to this issue, but, and gently, can we include information about this program in any sort of inspections, findings, related to issues like these when they are issued their notice, the residents, can we start informing residents of this opportunity that the city provides to help them get in compliance?
Yes, probably do already, but we can make sure we actually pass them out a pamphlet or something like if it's a roof issue, and we're there for a violation.
Okay, that sounds good to me, thank you.
Okay, now let's do rule call.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Seven eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-seven.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding terms of a development agreement with Agro Solutions to assist with the renovations of their facility at forty-four-fifteen-eighty-fifth Avenue, with an incentive package not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Move to, go ahead.
Move to approve the terms as recommended, direct staff to work with legal counsel to draft a development agreement, subject to minor attorney modifications, and authorize execution of the development agreement by the city manager.
Second. Move to second, I don't, is there anybody here representing Agro?
Yes, sir.
Would you mind, you come up here, please, and I guess, I did ask for each one of these companies to have somebody here to give a little talk about what their business is and what their, their goals are, accomplish here, or whatever, but I want the public and us to understand what we're doing.
My name is Tim Dunn, I'm president of Trinity Logistics Corporation in Bettendorf, Iowa, which is a subsidiary of Agro Solutions, and we're the largest component of the Agro Solutions business here in the Quad Cities, the primary business that will occupy this new space that you're being asked to support, is a manufacturing business that is currently located in Mylan, we've outgrown that facility, this facility that we're considering moving into is about three times the size of our current Mylan facility, it'll allow us to expand our manufacturing operation, as well as expand and bring in distribution activities that we at Trinity are leading, here in the Quad Cities, into this Rock Island facility in conjunction with our manufacturing operation.
Okay, are you also, you do business in Canada, is it?
That's correct, our ownership group is predominantly Canadian, we have operations globally, in Spain, in Canada, Brazil, and Argentina.
Okay, and, and real quick, I mean, I noticed, some people may have access to that, but at this point, you, about thirty-some odd, thirty-eight employees, forty employees to start with?
In our, in our Mylan operation, we typically have about thirty-five to forty throughout the year, during peak season, which we're in right now, we'll expand that with some additional staff, up to about seventy, we supply planting and seeding implements, so a very seasonal business, so we have a peak season where we employ more, a slower season where we drop our employment down to about that thirty-five or forty range.
And you're looking at, in a number of years, in two, three years down the road, adding a lot more employees?
Absolutely, again, we've outgrown the current facility, we don't have the room to expand into other product lines that we'd like to bring into this facility, by adding that expansion capacity, we'll obviously have to expand our employment, we see peak employment around the ninety to ninety-five staff people in the Rock Island facility.
Okay, that's great, and just, once again, I know that there was a public relation, PR out there, Coca-Cola bottling, moving out of the Rock Island, this is the facility that they'd be going into, and so Coca-Cola's scheduled to be out in April-ish sometime, and then they'll do some renovations of this building, and these people would be moving in shortly after that.
Correct.
After about nine-hundred thousand dollars worth of renovations, and moving equipment in from Canada and other places.
That's correct, out of that investment, about a third of it is new equipment, about a third of it is moving costs, and the other third is training for employees, so.
Thank you for your interest in Rock Island.
Yes, thank you very much for your commitment.
You're welcome. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, or?
No, I just think it's a wonderful thing that they're willing to invest somewhere over, says over nine-hundred thousand dollars, we're helping out with the investment or incentive package not to exceed fifty thousand dollars, so, those are good numbers as far as I'm concerned.
Good.
And the prospect of ninety new jobs is great.
Glad to do it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Rule call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Seven eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-eight.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding terms of a development agreement with Ecogistics to assist with the construction of a new facility at nine-fifty-thirty-first Avenue, with an incentive package not to exceed eight-hundred thousand dollars.
Move to approve the terms as recommended, direct staff to work with legal counsel to draft a development agreement, subject to minor attorney modifications, and authorize the execution of the development agreement by the city manager.
Second. Move to second, once again, I invited Kevin here, the owner, and him and his wife are owners of the, of the business, he's got actually some audio or video type of, or displays here, he's very energetic, he's got some, what the building potentially looked like, he's brought his banker with him, he's got a good number of, I think, employees here.
Anyone who is currently working with this team, just raise your hand, please?
Oh, wow, good representation.
And, and we've, we've got twenty-three current employees, and we were able to get a few of them out tonight.
So, you want to give a little bit about what you do, and what?
Sure, my, my name's Kevin Nolan, I live at thirty-four-hundred Twentieth Street Court, this is Lee Garlock, he's the president and owner of Fortress Bank, this is Drew Dasso, he's our architect on the project, former Rock Island grad, for anyone that, that matters too, in short, my wife and I own a company called Ecogistics, we're based currently on Eleventh Street in Rock Island, forty-three-thirty-eleventh Street, we came back to Rock Island about eight and a half years ago, and at that point in time, the company was just, was just myself, and over the last eight years, we've been fortunate enough to grow our company to twenty-three people, we did move into the property there at forty-three-thirty-eleventh about four years ago, and I think at that time, we had five people, and now we're full, the building, I think we've got three more people to hire, and then the building's full, so, expecting to continue to grow, as we have, we need more space, so I contacted Maritomes a couple months ago, asked what property was available, both existing and green space, and we went through anything and everything that was available in the city, and really came to the conclusion that this was the best spot for us, so we want to continue to grow in Rock Island, continue to hire more folks, continue to build spaces that are good for all of our employees, from a, from a work environment standpoint, be good neighbors, right, as you can see, from the drawings that Drew's got, and from the drawing there in the back, oh, hand that up, maybe, yeah, from, from, from that drawing as well, you can see that we're not putting up just any building that would, would somehow blight or take away from the neighborhood.
They see solar panels.
Yeah, you can see the solar panels, so, the, the building's going to be self-sustaining, and we're working with Drew to make sure that that happens, so we're just trying to be a really good neighbor, and trying to do good things in Rock Island.
Will you explain for folks that might not know what exactly you do?
Yes, sir, the, the easiest way for us to explain what we do is that we're essentially travel agents for full truckloads of freight, so we've got customers, some here in the Quad Cities, a majority of our customers are outside of the Quad Cities, but those customers have full truckloads of raw materials or finished goods that travel all over the country, and sometimes around the world, Canada, Mexico, I think we've shipped a number of shipments over to Spain as well, in the last twelve months, so, they contact us, we coordinate all of the pickup and delivery of that freight from point A to point B, as they need to. Is that, is that fair?
Real quick, once again, Kevin is, is also in the school, Rock Island School Board at this point currently, but, Rock Island resident, but he brought his business back here from Tennessee?
Yeah, from Memphis.
Memphis, Tennessee, has business down there, came back to the Quad Cities, raised his children and that sort of thing, he started in a smaller building downtown Rock Island here, outgrew that, and then bought the building on Eleventh Street, now has outgrown that, so he's been sticking with Rock Island, of course, his residence is in Rock Island.
It's really, it's really important, I, I mentioned it earlier today in a, in an interview that we did with Channel Six, but, but my, my personal family has lived in Rock Island for a hundred and twenty years, as other people jump across the river, maybe go down to Mole Lane, or Port Byron, or any, anyplace else, all great communities, I'm from Rock Island, I'm gonna stay in Rock Island, and, and so you can either help your own, or you can help others, and, and I choose to help my own, so, thank you for your support tonight.
Is there any questions, anybody have anything, or? And once again, I'm gonna, I've mentioned that, I know that's been questioned, I think the press has questioned about sometimes where this money comes from, we talk about tight budgets, and I, and I hate to talk about all the projects at this point, but budgets and where does this money come from that we are offering up, and some of the, in, in this case, Kevin's in a TIF zone, and so that potentially could be, but it expires in this, in several years, three years, and so some of it'll come out of a TIF that he'll generate, and you remember, I guess, once again, for, on TIFs, the base, the base is set for taxes, it's only given, rebated back anything above and beyond that base, it's new money generated, obviously, this will, three million, four million dollar building, if we can keep pushing, Kevin, it'll be a five million dollar building, but, he's a banker here, but, but, and, and the property taxes on that will obviously add monies to those TIF, along with the, the TIF area itself, so some of the monies are, will be coming out of the TIF, and then, once the TIF expires, it comes out of any property tax that we collect above and beyond that, that base, so, and it comes out over years, there's no money, in this case, upfront, it comes, it's spread out over, I can't remember, ten-year period, I believe, on this one, so, that's where the city is generating, it's, in a sense, generating, he generates it, and we just rebate it back, it's not other taxpayers' money, so I just want to put that to bed, it's, it's not other taxpayers' money that goes into it, it's really his that he's paying in.
For some period of time.
The, what the city has contributed, and of course, we've read the agreement, but the city owns that land, and we are selling that for a dollar, but there is a dollar, there's a value to that land, and so we've put a dollar value to that as part of this also, to the value of that land, so, that's where this money's coming from.
We're trying real hard to break, we're trying real hard to break ground by April first, and be onsite and in the building by the end of December, we've got a bunch more people to hire, so, I, I don't have any more places to stick them currently, so the sooner the better.
So, there you go, okay?
Wonderful.
Thank you very much, Kevin, your staff, and everybody.
Kevin.
Any, you can keep, that's fine.
Okay, I have something for you here, I heard what you said about Rock Island being your home.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. So, we are to the point of rule call.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Seven eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-nine.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding terms of a development agreement with Green Thumb Industries Incorporated to assist with the construction of a new facility at eighty-two-twenty-one-fifty-first Street, with an incentive package not to exceed seven-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars.
Move to approve the terms as recommended, direct staff to work with legal counsel to draft a development agreement, subject to minor attorney modifications, and authorize execution of the development agreement by the city manager.
Second.
Move to second, once again, is there anybody here from GTI? If you could give us your name, you write there on the, write it down there for us, appreciate it.
Yes, my name is Charles Amadine, I'm the general manager with GTI here in Rock Island, very excited to be here in Rock Island, we're growing, I think, over the last couple of years and a half, we've went from about thirty coworkers to about ninety-four right now, and we're in the process of doubling our square footage, some pretty significant investment, roughly about, you know, seventy thousand square foot addition that we're adding here, we're excited to be here, we hire locally in the area, so, you know, very exciting time for our growth in our industry, so.
And my understanding, of course, our agreement talks about eight million dollar construction, but I believe that keeps growing.
Yes.
I like, I'm trying to get Kevin going, and getting his bigger, yours did, so there's a little pressure on Kevin to, to do that, last I heard, you were about a ten million dollar expansion or so.
Yeah, so there's a lot, a lot going on right now, and we're just excited to be here in Rock Island, like I said, we hire locally, and all our coworkers are, are all locally to, to Rock Island, so.
Yep.
Very exciting time for us in our industry, so.
And looking at that, and at least another seventy jobs, if not more.
Oh, absolutely.
I know you've already been adding some.
Absolutely, we're, we're hot and heavy into it right now.
They have other growing facilities in the state of Illinois, and other parts of the United States, but in the state of Illinois, and so they had options where to go, they did not have to locate here in Rock Island, or make their expansion here, and they can ship the product, you know, around, and so they, they are making the choice to be here, versus their other ones, and so we're very glad of that, and, and to grow with this employment, so it's, it's a very positive, they like, I, I'll use Kevin again as a basis, so anxious to go that, there's already been some equipment out there, and they're working on proving the road, and they just, they, they're very anxious to get moving on it, that's, that's for sure, and so they're, I don't know even if they're gonna wait for the ground to thaw, they're gonna start going, but.
Oh, we're going.
So, it's a wonderful, exciting moment.
And sir, for those who may not know, GTI, the line of business that you all are in?
Yeah, so we are a medical cannabis cultivation center, so, fully, we essentially do all aspects of it, from cultivation infusion of all medical cannabis products, so, here in Rock Island.
Did you bring any samples?
Yeah.
A lot of your customers have, have seen their lives change because of the products that you're serving to alleviate chronic pain.
Absolutely.
And as the state of Illinois continues to add more to what is acceptable for a medical cannabis card, you guys are right there with us, expanding on that growth and, and truly changing lives of people.
Absolutely, GTI is, we're excited to be, be here in Rock Island, like I said, we're actually one of the few cultivation center that is delivering to every one of the fifty-three active dispensaries, so we're at the tip of despair, as you said, so, very exciting time.
Very good, thank you, so just as exciting, and I appreciate it, thank you. So, if you could, a rule call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Seven eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item thirty.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding terms of a development agreement with Coffee Break Restaurant Incorporated, doing business as QC Pancake House, to assist with the expansion of their restaurant at eighteen-thirty-one-third Avenue, with an incentive package not to exceed a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve the terms as recommended, direct staff to work with legal counsel to draft a development agreement, subject to minor attorney modifications, and authorize execution of the development agreement by the city manager.
Second. Move to second, discussions, and I'm not sure if Jose or, oh, Sarah's back here, okay, I know they had a catering job or something going on, so, Christmas party, staff Christmas party.
Oh, no.
So, thank you for taking time. So thank you for taking time.
Of course.
Most people know what you're due and all about it, but why don't you give a little summary of it?
Absolutely. We're a busy downtown local diner. I think I see all of your faces down there. We've currently, it's been a long time coming, have outgrown our space. We have 79 seats. We'll be adding 54 more. We've really reached kind of a breaking point where customers are now waiting up over an hour. And so just, we're turning away too many people. So we'll have 54 additional seats. We'll be adding a bar area, ultimately apply for our liquor licenses as well. And that's just looking to kind of enhance the breakfast experience, you know, maybe with mimosas, Bloody Marys, be able to have parties there as well after hours, which we get a lot of requests for, or catering events during the day. We do things currently for like Monard Woodman, and maybe they want their own designated space where they can do presentations. We're also going to be able to enlarge our kitchen a little bit and add some additional cooking space. We'll be creating new, unfortunately, we just redid our bathrooms, but we will redo them again. So we'll be experts at that. So we'll have new bathrooms. We will finally be able to have a walk-in cooler and freezer. And so really, again, just working towards having the appropriate space that we should have. So we'll be adding 12, just really to begin with, minimal 12 additional jobs, so.
And this is, once again, we know here, talk about a $500,000 investment here for this new expansion, but that is really on the heels, and literally almost the heels. I don't think the paint's dried on the past work that they've done on the exterior and the kitchen and everything else. You know, it'll be almost a million-dollar investment they've made in the last 12 months, give or take, in that facility. And so thank you very much for that.
And I can see the restaurant from my office window, and I can tell you, over the years, it's harder to find parking spots on the street. You're definitely growing that corner. And I'm sure people will appreciate not having to complain to wait anymore.
Absolutely. We see people from all over. We have people that come in, they tell us from Chicago, all over, just to come in and eat. So it's pretty exciting, and we really appreciate the city's support, absolutely.
They also, they've made a commitment. They've purchased a place downtown to live. They haven't got it remounted yet to be there, but.
We've done that, yeah. This first.
So, that's exactly. It's all priorities. But, so they're continuing to make that commitment even above and beyond the business and the personal life. I'll ask, almost like the last person, did you bring any samples?
The two could have caught really well together.
That's exactly.
Sarah, you've been one of the great success stories in downtown Rock Island. And I just have one question. Are you going to keep the mural?
Absolutely. Yeah. Suzie Holgerson did that for us. She did set design over at Circa. She's going to help us with more decorations. So she's got, I'm not very good at that sort of thing, so.
Well, thank you for great, great service. Looking forward to the new place.
I would just like to say, I pride myself on having, you know, sort of a taste in food, you know, a culinary palate, if you will. And really, I've been to, I think, all of the top restaurants in the Quad Cities. I'm always looking for a new place when I travel around. And I say this with all seriousness, you all are the most successful restaurant in the Quad Cities right now. And my hat off to you for that, because whatever you guys have done, and it's hard to describe, can't really quite put your finger on it, but I've never seen anything like that in the Quad Cities, people willing to wait an hour to have lunch. It's unheard of. And it's just, it's a testament to the staff, the serving staff there who are always kind, no matter how busy it is. It's like, you're going to get your table, you know, everything's okay. I mean, the food is consistently awesome. And it's just, you know, like the mayor said about, you know, other companies, you guys could have gone anywhere, really. You could have put it, you know, in any of the neighboring cities. And you brought that incredible success to our downtown, and we couldn't be more appreciative. And I know it goes without saying, but as you grow and want to continue to grow beyond this, you're always going to have the support of this council up here to grow with you. So, thank you.
We appreciate that. We just really care about what we do, and we're there all the time.
Customer service.
But we take great pride in what we do.
May I make a comment that the Davenport mayor eats there on a regular basis?
He's there Saturday.
So I'm going to throw that out there, and he's probably going to throw me on one day of our Davenport. But Frank Lips is there on a regular basis, enjoying it also, so.
He almost had a dish named after him.
Yes, he is a vegetarian.
That's scandalous.
Picky eater. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Last but not least, 31.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding terms of a development agreement with Ms. Brimmanis to assist with the renovation of their new facility at 1709 2nd Avenue with an incentive package not to exceed $185,000.
Move to approve the terms as recommended. Direct staff to work with legal counsel to draft a development agreement subject to minor attorney modifications and authorize the execution of the development agreement by the city manager.
Second. Moved to second. What's the discussion? Nicole or anybody here? She brought a, boy, that's quite a book. You've got a lot of.
In this book.
Yes, you do.
Well, I don't know, for those who are from Rock Island or have lived in Rock Island for a while, Ms. Brimmanis is currently on 7th Avenue and 11th Street. We'll be celebrating our 20th year anniversary in May. We've really just outgrown the corner. We have hair from the floor to the ceiling. And so when barkins closed last year, we saw an opportunity to go into a place that was already well-known. I believe it was the longest-running retail business in the Quad City area. And so to be able to go into the downtown area and expand our space, double our space, was an opportunity that we really couldn't miss. The upstairs floor was a plus for us because we definitely needed, or felt that we needed a indoor space, an indoor event space overlooking the city skyline, which is something that we don't have currently. So basically, that's what we're investing in and looking for incentives for the city to help us invest in that.
But you're also adding some different things to your business, your banquet room?
The event space will be upstairs. That's the banquet room, yes.
How about on the roof?
We are adding a rooftop deck as well. So you'll be able to actually, like I said, see the Mississippi skyline, which is beautiful, Mark's Peabody Park. If anyone has ever been to the Up Bar in Davenport or the Current, the view is amazing. We plan on having that in our Rock Island downtown area.
I believe in 2017, the city recognized your business as Citizen of the Year.
Yes.
And so thanks for your continued growth and investment in the city.
I'm definitely a rock town girl, born and raised. My children go to Rock Island High School. I literally live within a seven-block radius of everywhere I go, including QC Pancake House and Rock Island High School. And so I have a small circle. And, I mean, Rock Island's always going to be home for me, and it's always been good to me.
If you start buying a truckload, I know a company that can line up the truck.
Already on.
So I would say that I was a little sad to hear Ms. Brimmanis was leaving the first ward, but we were happy for your growth. And people from all over, from Davenport, Bendorf, they all come to Ms. Brimmanis. So that was one of our attractions. But I'm happy you're staying in the city of Rock Island.
Thank you.
And I age myself, I was on the Curly loan committee a number of years ago, and she took out a Curly loan when she started up and everything else. And I had the pleasure of going down there and celebrating at your location with Mary Chapel at the time and the group, and celebrate the, kind of the burning of the loan, so to speak. She paid it off and has been, continue to be successful. And so that seed money, a lot of times, does help people get started and be successful. So thank you for that also.
Yes, Mayor. Point of information, that corner where she's at, an alderman, Jerry Phelps, had that corner as a dry cleaning business 25, 30 years ago. So that is a great location, whether you keep it, sell it, or whatever. That location is a great location.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
If I can just take one more moment, I guess, about all these, we've had, this will be the fifth one, and quite a mark for us, I guess, in this kind of development. Ending 2018 with this type of developments and a jumpstart on the employment and everything else for 2019, I could tell you, it's great things. It sets the bar high for what we have to do in 2019. But I'm convinced that as the city council and the staff and everything else, and the great citizens we have here, 2019's going to be great. We're going to have a lot more of these type of celebrations as 2019 goes. There's still conversations going on with people, so we're not done. But I also got to, I guess, do a shout-out for a little bit, I'll say, the team that helped put some of these together. Chandler Poole's not here tonight. He had a pre-arranged vacation and everything else, but Chandler was very involved. Obviously, some people within his department, but Chandler was heavily involved in a number of the, all of them were involved, but some were a little heavier than others. And so Chandler was very much involved with this and deserves credit for helping drive these home, along with our city manager. Randy was involved with a number of them, not just the acid test and see what can happen. Randy was down at, talking to Sarah and Jose, and working on getting data together for them and understanding what they were looking for. Chandler was working with Agro Sources and talking to the developer there and the renovations. GTI, I made the contact there and worked with them there. But we were all involved in one way or the other. And then, of course, with Stephanie in finance, because once again, we wanted to acid test and make sure, can the city afford these? Are these wise moves to make in percentages? Where the money's going to come from? And so finance was heavily involved. And so the four of us, I got to say that, and I'm not trying to toot my horn, I hate to even bring mine up, but we're very active in making this happen. It wasn't one individual, it wasn't one department, it was a group. And so that's what it takes, is good teamwork. And now to finalize that teamwork is the city council with the positive votes and comments is the final, so to speak, I guess, team, part of the team. And so thank you for that and the confidence. But I want to make sure those people got a little shout-out, that they worked hard at it and to make it happen. Some of these things took months upon months to get put together. And I got to say, Kevin, I'm not even sure if it's a month, but it was a fast act with Kevin in getting it together. So every deal's a little different, but thank you. So roll call.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Thank you very much, everyone.
And I think we clap for everyone but Agro Solutions.
Yes, we did. Exactly. They're all important, that's for sure, every one of them. Run 32.
Other business, public comments.
I would think the mayor is being a little humble tonight. I think the mayor deserves a lot of the success we just witnessed here tonight. And I'd like to thank the mayor for his leadership and his staff and the teams that do it every day for a living. And it's not a part-time job that you do. You are here every day, all day, and it is noteworthy. And you're being a little bit humble, sir. Thank you for what you've done, too.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Our city attorney, we put him to work, too. So he's helped, the crunch, that sometimes it's kind of, can you have this done tomorrow?
I know him. He's okay with that.
Is he all right with that? But, all right. If there's nothing else, nobody signed up to speak? Is there anything else from the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to announce that I am running for reelection. Today was the deadline. I will be running for reelection for the second ward, not like my colleague from the sixth ward, as he brought up, that I thought he was running a rouge. But we do things like that. We're boys, okay? But I am running for reelection because there's things in the second ward that I would like to see fulfilled.
Okay. Any other comments?
Just want to push a general message of goodwill and good tidings to all this holiday season. There's a lot of different holidays that are going to be celebrated over the next few weeks here in the Quad Cities, a lot of different faiths and traditions, all joining in this, in this community, and just hopefully a time of peace and reflection and good time with family and friends.
Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Figure it out. I just put someone down. I don't think they care.
You made the second.
All the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Happy holidays.